Well, it's one minute past seven. I know Jane will be joining us if other people want to. They're welcome to, but we are good to go really, and there's quite a lot to go through. So I'm going to crack on if that's okay with everybody. So without further ado, welcome to the Events Committee of Ramsgate Town Council on the 2nd of March 2021. My name is councillor Amory Nixie and I'm the Chair of Ramsgate Town Council. And for this meeting only, due to technical difficulties, I will be chairing the meeting. Whereas normally it would be councillor Green, bless him, but he's having problems with his computer. So humour me, help me and thank you. Okay. So first thing first is we have an apology from councillor Huxley. I take it Eileen, there's been no other apologies, has there?
Not to me, Chairman.
Brilliant, thank you my love. Right, okay. Item number two on the agenda is declarations of interest. Does anybody have any declarations of interest at all? No, we take that as a no. This is going to be romping through. Brilliant. Right, we've got the 25th of November minutes and we need a proposer and a second for that, please. Oh, I'll propose.
I'll second. I'll be on.
Thank you councillor Young. Right, okay, so item number four is Active Ramsgate and it's straight over to Cheryl, I believe, who I've been told is at 15 minutes. You're on the clock, love, and to give us your report. Thank you very much. I'll go on mute.
Yeah, hi everybody. So I'm Cheryl and I'm an external consultant, responsible tourism consultant. And I've been project managing, project coordinating Active Ramsgate since its inception many years ago. So just a quick update on what we're up to at the moment and what we've done since last you met. On the marketing front, we've now commissioned with a photographer called Mike Goldwater, new photography for Active Ramsgate to reflect the new branding position and positioning. So at the moment, we're about to go out on social media to get a family and a couple from Ramsgate photogenic, who can be models for our two-day photo shoot. That's obviously, we can only do that once Covid restrictions allow us because we want to do some shots outdoor cafes and things like that as part of that. So, but that's soon to be done. Working currently on a new cycling e-leaflet, which is called Pier to Pier. So the cycling trail goes from Ramsgate East Pier to Deal Pier along the Viking Coastal Trail and then one of the national cycling routes. Fantastic trail. I've done it a couple of times now to test it out and to collect information that we're going to put on the e-leaflet to really bring that to life for people. So door to door, it's 20 kilometres, so it will take people a couple of hours. But obviously, the overall aim of it is to get people to fuel up in Ramsgate before they set out and to fuel up again in local cafes, et cetera, on the way back when they've arrived back in Ramsgate and to promote overnight stays. Another thing we're doing currently is we've commissioned with Sleeping Giant, which is an online media company based in Folkestone, to do an audit of the Visit Ramsgate website. And that's to see basically how we can improve its performance. So it'd be very much looking at the back end of that sort of search engine optimization, keyword strategy, et cetera, et cetera. So that in our target markets, both lifestyle and geographically, we can rank higher for those types of people to look at Ramsgate as an active tourism destination. So that work is currently in progress, should be finished by the end of this week. And then we've got the task of working on that website to implement all the changes, along with putting the new photography on there.
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Sorry, it's not a question, but I am going to ask anybody that's not talking, i.e. Cheryl, to go on mute, if I may. So Pat, you've just come in, thank you. Brilliant, thank you very much.
Yeah, and then we'll be updating that site with the new photography. And we're having new copy done as well by a local copywriter in the Active Ramsgate section. What else are we doing? We're doing quite a lot of getting our PR ready to go as soon as restrictions lift and we're back full throttle in terms of promoting Ramsgate for visits. So we're working with Visit Kent, Thalick District Council and our own independent PR consultant is doing work in the regional media, both general media and specialist media. So kite surfing media, you know, bird watching media, et cetera, sort of specialist magazines. So that is ongoing. What else on here? Our leaflet distribution campaign with Pair Communications. I currently have got that on hold, but that will be reinstated at the end of this month. So that our leaflets are out around Kent and into London, Essex, et cetera, by the beginning of April. So that's just, it will extend the season of those leaflets, so they're not out there whilst we don't want people coming to Ramsgate to visit. What else? We put in a successful bid to Visit Ramsgate. They've got a big multimillion pound interreg project to develop tourism experiences. So taking existing product and new product and packaging that into experiences. Because that is the way the market has moved, rather than from just activities to experiences. So I put in a bid for two potential projects. One is triathlon for triathlon virgins, basically. So anybody who hasn't done a triathlon before, to do a small group taste of triathlon with us. So sea swimming and then that bike ride from Ramsgate to Deal and then a run along one of our walking trails. So we've got the funding to do that from Visit Kent, they've accepted that, to develop that with us. And so their support will be to help us market test that with our potential target markets, as well as new photography for those experiences, helping us with the marketing, both sort of generically and with the travel trade. Because we will be doing these as small group experiences. And the other one that we were successful with our bid was paddle boarding, small group paddle boarding experiences, sunset and sunrise ones, but linked to a social experience afterwards. So you do your small group paddle. And then if it's the sunrise one, it's all head down to a local eatery for breakfast together to, you know, experience Ramsgate hospitality. Or if it's the sunset one, it'll be into a local pub for drinks and a meal afterwards. But package that all together. And so we'll be working with Kite Pirates, our local kite school, but working with independent eaters as well to bring that experience together. So that's quite exciting, because that's the first time that we've got sort of support from Visit Kent to deliver those types of experiences. That's really great. We're also linking with a business in Ramsgate. She runs a B and B, but she started to do a small group Nordic walking. So we think that's also a great fit for Active Ramsgate. So we're working with that local business to package that and promote that for the benefit of other businesses as well as hers in Ramsgate. And I think the final thing to say is, if we want to, we have been successful in securing a leg of the British Kite Surfing Championships this year. Remember that last year it was postponed to this year because of Covid. This is scheduled for the last weekend in August, which is the bank holiday weekend. And so we're in talks with them now to see exactly what that sponsorship would involve, how much that would cost, et cetera. And then it'd be down to you guys to decide whether you want us to work on that and bring that to fruition. I think it's a fantastic idea. Just in the media coverage alone, it's well worth that sponsorship. Because we always in the past have managed to secure ITV and BBC South East today news coverage. And I don't see why we wouldn't sort of get that again. So just on media coverage alone, it's well worth doing. Plus it keeps us firmly on the map as an emerging active kite surfing stroke destination. So yeah, so that's me. Just throw it open to questions. Because I know it's the first time you've met me and you might have lots of questions, I don't know.
Oh, first of all, I'd like to say thank you. That was very comprehensive and awfully exciting, I have to say. Dean's eyes lit up when you mentioned triathlon. It's a bit of a worry. Just before I, David Green's got his hand up. I've got a question actually. With regards to the two packages that you talked about, which both sound wonderful and you mentioned it would be with Kite Pirates. How does somebody book that or get in contact with that? I'm assuming that's through us as well or is it just through them? Where is it sort of like based in the world of, you know, marketing?
I mean, that's something that we, that would be part of the programme with Visit Kent to decide how best we market this and bring it to market. But I anticipate that will be marketing that through the Active Ramsgate website and Kite Pirates website, as well as through Visit Kent. But it'll come back to one booking outlet, yet to be determined. Because we need to work that up after talking to consumers.
Okay, thank you. That answers that. David Green's got a question, so I'll hand it over to David.
It's just those two experiences. Do you happen to know how much they're worth, the bids? How much are they bringing in?
What do you mean, David? Sorry.
You bid for money, didn't you, or help?
We don't actually see the money.
But do you have an idea of how much?
Yeah, roughly £6,000 per experience.
That's brilliant. Okay, thank you.
But we won't see that money physically. It's just that they will give us a consultant who specializes in experiences. So that will be buying some of his time. It'll be for the photo shoot. It'll be for the marketing, et cetera. Yeah.
Really good though. And there was another question, as you said about that, but I'll think of it in a minute. Did anybody else got any questions while I'm busy racking my brains? Anybody else? No, it's going to come back to me at some point. Apologies. It's gone now, but I'm sure I could ask David or I can contact you at another point to find that out. Oh, Jane Heatherington's raised her hand. Councillor Heatherington, thank you.
Yes, sorry. I'm sorry, I arrived a bit late for this. So you might have covered it in what you were saying, which was, sounded very comprehensive, but I was about five minutes late. I'm wondering more, because as you're probably aware, there's an awful lot of swimming going on locally now through the various swimming groups, you know, throughout the year. And I'm wondering if we can kind of exploit that a little bit more. Because, you know, you could sort of do round the cliffs swimming, you know, open water swimming. If we could kind of, if there's been any thoughts on that topic.
Yeah, as part of the triathlon, we'll be linking with, I can't remember the company, but it's an organisation in Kent who specialise in wild swimming.
Yes.
And so we'll be linking with them, because obviously when we do this, health and safety will be paramount if we're getting people in the sea, et cetera. So we will be working with them and some triathlon experts to see how to develop this. Off the back of that, in terms of wild swimming, I think we already sort of, and if we don't, we should, Dean, promote, you know, Ramsgate as a destination for wild swimming, et cetera, on the Active Ramsgate website. But I think that would be something that we look more at when we look at the safety implications of actively promoting that and what we need to do to cover ourselves, basically. If we are promoting something like that. But definitely, you know, Ramsgate is a fantastic wild swimming destination.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going to add to that, because I mean, I pay money to go on holidays run by a company called SwimTrek, where you swim along the coasts of various countries. And I mean, I think we've got a jolly nice coastline that could well be swam along, you know, and people could be encouraged to do that and bring money to the town as a result of that. So yeah, just a thought. Thank you.
Yeah, can I just say one thing on that for the paddle boarding experience? That will be subject to us being able to unblock the permission from Thalick District Council for Kite Pirates to actually do paddle boarding off Ramsgate main sands. That's been a block for a couple of years now. And that will need unblocking, because obviously Visit Kent won't develop that experience with us if Thalick District Council haven't given permission for them to operate off the beach.
And sorry, councillor Heatherington's got her hand up, but just before she does, I might preempt her a question. Do we know why there's a block there and what it was set with regards to?
We don't know. We're really frustrated.
I've heard no more on that. It's with the government, it's concerned.
David, I'm really sorry, we didn't hear any of that, sorry.
Well, it's, it's no, no, it's really, I've heard nothing. I know TDC are Kite Pirates, but I don't know how it's going or when we're likely to hear, but I'll chase it up again this week.
Yeah, we've been chasing that for quite a while, but it seems to be a bit of a brick wall, Thalick District Council end, and Kite Pirates have been chasing it as well. But they just keep getting sort of like, nothing emails back, basically. Not saying what the issue is or how it can be unblocked. So it's very frustrating.
Yeah, that is frustrating. Thank you for letting us know. I'm dangerous on the case, is really good on things like this. But if it's something that we need to bring up or as a council write in or anything, then obviously councillor Green will notify us and we'll see what we can do with regards to that. And my question was earlier, it was about the kite surfing, which is brilliant, by the way, and I'm really glad you've got that. And over is it the bank holiday weekend in August, did you say?
Yeah, the Saturday and the Sunday bank holiday weekend. Oh, actually, no, it's not. It's the weekend before because of tide. It's the weekend before or the weekend after. So we've got to sort of look at that. Because obviously the tide's got to be right.
Lovely. Thank you. Anybody else got any questions? No, thank you very much. That's lovely. Thank you. Okay, right, so item number five on the agenda is the town promoter report. That's Rebecca, you're up. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you've all received my report. So obviously, if anyone's got any questions about that, feel free to ask me. One of the things, obviously Cheryl's mentioned about the website, which is really exciting. And, you know, it'd be great to get, that will be done in the next few weeks, ready for hopefully a great high season. I think the main focus I wanted to talk about was the empty businesses and what's potentially happening in the town centre. Just to update you from the empty premises report I gave you. Argos are looking to rent, but it just, the rent they've asked, they're asking for is £77,000 a year. So this is sort of what you're up against and that doesn't include business rates. Equally, Peacocks, that hasn't gone on yet, but it would probably be similar. I reported about New Look at £55. But, you know, there are opportunities to maybe look at some of the social projects that were dropped, is probably one way of putting it. But they weren't, we weren't able to look at those for the Future High Street Fund application, mainly because there wasn't a space, you know, timing is everything. And, you know, six months after the applications went in, they're, obviously it looks like we're going to have some large gaps in our pedestrianised town centre. But there's perhaps opportunities to look at some of those social projects. Janet Fielding from Project Motor House put me in touch with a chap from A Stop who takes on empty premises, often in shopping malls. So at the moment, he's looking at Westwood Cross, but he's also got an interest in the town centre. And what they do is they take them over and have one, two, three, four, even five different charities working in there. They can have on occasion social enterprises as well. So as long as there's a main charity, because that, as far as the landlords go, helps with their business rates and how they can offset that on their portfolios. So there are opportunities and it may be that the, with the social projects that we've looked at in the past and the various charities and social enterprises, that we could perhaps utilise some of those empty buildings. Just also to update on the Future High Street Fund, that did go in on Thursday and, you know, it's looking pretty good considering we have had to shave away a little bit, having only got two thirds of the money that was requested. But both projects will be going ahead. And also the Historic High Street Fund, that should, things should start moving again by the end of this month. So, and we will also find out about Future High Street Fund at the end of this month. So it's all coming together, hopefully, for some real great opportunities that will, I think, act as a catalyst for investment and regeneration into the town centre. Yeah, two of the buildings, you know, where the old grumpy goblin is and pure escapism hairdressers. Somebody's bought that whole development. And they're going to be turning the top parts into flats, but they'll still have the commercial ground floor. So that's also positive news. The other thing I wanted to talk about was an idea about lighting. And obviously being the bicentennial year, it's thinking about things that we could do to really brighten up the harbour. And I know that there was some funding put aside for a couple of Christmas lights displays in 2019 and last year that didn't get spent. But I'm thinking about whether we could put some festoon lighting to pick out the arches, starting in maybe Military Road. And then if it's successful, building that up along Down Royal Parade as well. But I think it'd be something that would be worth consulting a professional on. And I can certainly try and get some prices for that, but I think it would look really lovely. And the other thing I wanted to, I know that David's going to talk to you about UCM. And the other thing's gone out of my head. Well, we're looking at the parking and what we can do there. I recognise that that's a difficult situation, but it would be nice to think that there could be some, either look again at the Saturday free parking at the multi-storey or trying to get one hour free in maybe on-street parking. And then also, of course, with the market and what we're going to do there. Because it has, we know it has been deferred by Thalick District Council, who were going to put it out to the procurement in the end of January. And I think now they're looking at end of March, beginning of April for that, which is going to delay things further. So yeah, other than that, any questions about anything else in my report?
Any questions, anybody? David Green.
We've heard that the Chancellor is going to announce another major High Street funding grant scheme this week. So we need to be ready for a bid for that.
Yeah, we had a meeting with Louise Ascue this morning, the Coastal Community Team. And we talked about that, we talked about the levelling up funds as well, which is, will probably be very similar in the application process. But yeah, absolutely, there, I think there will be other opportunities. And we can perhaps, as I say, go back to those, some of those other projects we looked at that will help with employment. That was the other thing I wanted to mention, actually. And Cheryl touched on it, the 10th, because the kite surfing, if we are going to do that, it is, and if Cheryl's still with us, she'll confirm that that is £10,000 for the package that we have had, we had two years prior to the one, obviously last week, last year's was cancelled, but we did, we had put aside £10,000 for that. And also, if I remember correctly, another £2,500 towards half-road closure and some funding towards some live music to sort of coincide with that weekend. And it's just whether or not we need to, one of us from the Active Ramsgate team need to do an application for that or is that something that we can discuss via David Green, councillor Green?
Eileen, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is they were bids to the Events Fund. So we need to bid for them to the Events Fund when we know what's actually happening.
Councillor Green, that is correct. But I was going to cover that when I do the report on events funding and maybe set aside the £10,000 and wait for the application to come in. Because obviously Cheryl and Rebecca need to speak to them. So if we set it aside and we get an application, we've already said that's okay. So I'll cover that in that report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Heatherington, you have your hand up.
I'm just curious, because Rebecca mentioned the market being deferred until the end, the decision being deferred until the end of March by TDC. And I was just curious as to why that was. I don't know whether you know the answer, Rebecca.
Yeah, no, no, it was the sort of obvious reason, I guess, that, you know, we, everybody's using at the moment. And it was at that point, they felt that it, because there was no roadmap when they originally were going to put it out for tender, which was about the 24th of January. They felt that they weren't going to generate enough interest at that point. So it's been deferred and they actually haven't given us a firm date. But hopefully now that there is this sort of vision for the next few months and reopening, they will, they'll come back to us with a date. But I'll chase that actually, because we do need to know.
Yeah.
There's, now there shouldn't be a reason for them to not put that out for procurement. So I'll get in touch with Andrea and Rob Larch and find out.
Thanks. Thank you. I think we could move forward a bit now. Thanks. Thank you. I think we could move forward a bit.
I see, I see, you can, councillor Young, but there was somebody in front of you, if you, but I can't see the name. So I've seen a hand up, but I don't know the name. So was there somebody?
Councillor Wing. I arrived late. I'm sorry. I had another meeting and I just needed to eat something. The market worries me as well, and there was no adequate reason given. And actually, Madeline Homer wasn't aware of the delay. So I think it's certainly something we should be pursuing with all vigour, because that market is key to getting, if we can get the, and we also need to ensure that we are part of the selection process. This is our market, not, not Margate's or TDC's, it's Ramsgate's market. So I think perhaps maybe as the Chair, Anne Marie, you need to write with a matter of urgency, and Richard, to ask, what, to, to say that, to just express our concern that this needs to happen sooner rather than later, that we would, we want to be fully engaged in the process, which includes a tendering process, I believe. And we want to, we want to have a look at what they're actually asking, what they're tendering for, the wording of that. I'd certainly like to see something that can be expanded and bringing in some of the other, the other events and markets that we have that are so successful. Something that can, some, a group that would work in partnership with other, with, with some of our voluntary groups that also run events. So there could be a regular market and then maybe once a month, there could be a can in town that we're, quite a lot of us pile in and work inside that market. It needs to be an expansive market rather than a restrictive one. That's what, that's what I believe.
And if you're, if you're happy sort of writing that letter, I'm more than happy to put my name to it, because you, you're very focused on what you want. So rather than me doing you a disservice, or just at least bullet points for me, and then I can write it down, if that's okay.
I am up to my neck in stuff. I obviously work three days a week. I mean, I think the guiding principle is we need clarification from Madeline, what is the timescale for it?
Right, okay.
And can we have an input into, because I think what we need to do is we need to look at the paperwork they're putting out for the tender. If we can get that, then we can look at that. We've got a starting point to amend it. So I think the two, the key things are, can she clarify when this will happen? And can we be involved in every aspect of the process? Including the tendering documentation. I think it's as simple as that. Don't complicate it.
Okay, I will do. Thank you. Brilliant. Rebecca, are you answering Becky's? Because if not, I'm going to ask councillor.
Yeah, just to, just to go back to what Becky was saying. I think the problem is that if we mix the highs, anything that goes into the High Street has a market operator. And with that comes the, the VOA of 16 and a half K a year as business rates. And the, the only way around that is if you work under the banner of a charity, for example. And then, you know, you, which is why we've looked before about starting something in Charlotte Court with, you know, Becky's Addington Street Fair Group, Molly Morgan's Makers Market and Ramsgate Arts and their vintage, their vintage fair that, that obviously the handmade fair that used to happen every month before lockdown. So that's one way we could do it, is to have something small, start it small anywhere in Charlotte Court. And then if, if it was under the banner of a charity, then it could move to the High Street without having that massive sting of a 16 and a half K bill. And that's set by a central government, so it's not anything that TDC have put in place, but it is something to consider if, if you want to do any market operation within the, with the actual town centre and the High Street, et cetera, where the old market used to be. So, yeah, that was.
Thank you. councillor Young, thank you for waiting.
I was just wondering, Rebecca, if there was any chance we could have a farmer's market, like they do in Cliftonville? Another way of bringing people into the town?
Yes, again, they, they could also work with us, but the, the farmer's market is run by volunteers. And that's, you know, why they, they had the sort of stop for a little while, because it's, it's so, it's become so big, because it's so successful. As you, as you say, it could be something that if we were to do a hyper-local market, they could work with. And I have got, I have emailed them about doing something like that. But again, if they went to the town centre, unless they're working under a charitable banner, they would be, they would have the same issue with the business rates, which of course, you know, is, is an obstacle for a lot of these smaller operations that are run on a, on a, on a voluntary basis. But yeah, it would be lovely.
Do you think they could perhaps involve the Salvation Army, something like that?
Well, we, we remember Ramsgate Arts is, the handmade of vintage fair is, is something that's been born out of Ramsgate Arts, which of course is a, a charity. So, you know, there is an opportunity there to perhaps do something that we could grow organically, pardon the pun, with farmers' markets and all that, but you know what I mean? And so, yeah, it, I think it would be lovely to have a food offering and, you know, we've got the allotments and all of those sort of things as well. So it would be a draw.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that's got any other questions? No, thank you very much, Rebecca. Lovely. Right, okay. So Agenda item number six is the Town Clerk's report. Is this something that I'm going to read out or was, do I have any other takers from the board here? Eileen, shall I read what was, what was given to me earlier?
Yeah, I think so, Chair. Thank you.
Certainly. Okay. So the Town Clerk was asked by the Chairman of the Town Promotion to look at the agreement put in place for the museum app created by Your Heritage Limited. He has reviewed this, detailed the concerns, and both have come to an agreement. Both the Town Clerk and Town Promotion Chairman are happy with this agreement, and it needs to be signed off by the committee. Any questions about the app can be directed to Adrian, who I believe is in the room with us this evening, who is at present at the meeting exactly. So Adrian, would you like to say anything? Would anybody else like to say anything?
I mean, I can give you a very quick update as to where we are, if that's of use. So, yeah, we've, we've got the Pugin Trail and also the Blue Pack Trails are up and they're all done. We're ready to go as well. We're waiting for some iteration for the Van Gogh Trail. And we'd be able to get that up on, on quickly as well. We've, we've had some, some great news as well with, we've been working quite closely with the Ramsgate tunnels with regards to Eagle's War, which is the World War Two themed story. And they're, they're supporting us. They're actually helping with some of the cost of producing that, because we're using professional actors and professional audio. And that's coming on really, really well. They, we will be recording the actual audio script, hopefully the latter part of this week. There was quite, we had some really, really great talent as well, which, which we wanted to get involved. And it was so difficult. Initially, we had five, we got that down to three. And then I sent some samples of that to some members of the council. So I know both Rebecca and David very kindly listened to the three samples and gave some feedback as well. Frustratingly, about 10 people kind of reviewed them and there was no out and out clear preference. It was really frustrating. Every time I thought, well, ask someone else, maybe it will start leaning this way. It, it just didn't happen. It just, it just kept on lowering off, because the standard of quality was really great. So in the end, I kind of, I, I made a, a kind of an executive decision. And we've gone with a lady called Catherine now. Said it all fresh microses. And we went with Catherine because her voice was, was softer as well. It was interesting, because I noticed a lot of the men picked a slightly a deeper, huskier voice. The women picked lighter voices and I felt that Eagle's War, the whole point of Eagle's War through the champion women's stories as well. So I thought, actually, I wanted to go with a voice which was gentler and would appeal more. So certainly from the production end and what we can do and where we are, everything's looking really, really good. We are really now, I say, waiting for, for Ramsgate to go ahead and say, yeah, let's, let's launch this thing, let's go for it. Certainly with regards to the additional trails as well, I can put those on whenever you're ready with those. So that's, it's all looking good.
Thank you. That sounds fantastic. councillor Green.
In terms of advertising the trails, which I think is the next big thing we're going to have to do. I asked Dean if it would be possible to advertise them through our, the magazine thing that we, we put through everybody's door in the town. It would seem, if, if the time is right, it would seem an opportunity we shouldn't miss.
Yeah, I agree. And we could provide anything you require for that graphics wise. We can also provide a, a universal QR code which enables people, doesn't matter which platform or device they're on, it will automatically take them to the relevant app store. And we're more than happy to help with anything like that. So if you do need anything from us with regards to that, we can certainly produce things.
So could you work with Dean on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm more than happy to. I've got Dean's email, so I can, you know, I can find out what he needs. Dean just lets me know dimensions, sizes and timescales, and we could put that together.
I think we also need to think about a leaflet through our leaflet distribution people. I know there'll be a cost for that, but we need to, I think we need to, to find a bit of money to, to do that.
Yeah, again, more than happy to help out with anything that's required with regards to graphics or anything like that. And I, I think in the very, one of the very earliest meetings we had when we first talked about the possibility of launching a project, is, if the success is down to how much people buy in, i.e. how much the council buys in, how many people buy in. Because the platform is, is growing. I know that we, I, I targeted Ramsgate, because kind of my hometown has been a place I wanted to try and really get on the map and start it in the UK. But just out of it, you know, just out of interest in looking at the figures in Denmark. Last year, obviously, last year was a horrific year with Covid. But their, their app downloads doubled. And we're currently, we're very close to 100,000 users on the platform. And we're seeing a very steady increase. And I think, you know, if we, if we can get a good, a really great, we want to make Ramsgate a really great showcase as something that both the town could be proud of, Your Heritage can be proud of, and other people will look at and say, we want to get on the platform. Because as, as much as it grows, it helps and supports other towns and other councils as well. So it's a lot of great synergy there. So we're more than happy to help as best we can with anything you need for marketing materials. Yeah.
Thank you. I have to second councillor Green's ideas. The more we promote Ramsgate especially, I mean, there's so much going on, this meeting just shows that, doesn't it? And really get our name out there for all the different things, the better. So social media, website, you know, as, as David says, the Ramsgate Matters magazine especially, and Leaflets. Thank you. It says here, I just want to check councillor Green, it says here, an agreement needs to be signed off. I'm assuming that's not this evening, it's something further down in the future.
The arrangement is, is that we get a year's trial. But I wanted to be, everybody to be clear, that provided it's successful, and I think it will be, that we are, that we are up for buying into the project after the trial. And so I wanted the clerk to have a look at the agreement so that he was, he would be happy with it when we came to sign it. So it's now before this committee, the Town Clerk has approved it. So it's just before this committee to say, yes, we're happy with it too.
Do we need a, or can we just put it to the vote without one?
We need a vote, yeah.
Okay. So is there anybody against any of this? The easiest way to do it. I take that as a no through the silence. Thank you very much. Again, if you have any questions, now's the time to ask them. But that all sounds very exciting, quite frankly. And thank you.
Thank you.
councillor Young.
I was just wondering, we're talking about a leaflet going through the doors. People always like to have a little voucher. So is there some way we can get people in the town interested in having a voucher in the leaflet? Now go to this cafe and you get a cup of tea or, and then they'll spend money there as well.
I'm throwing that on the town promoter's lap. Muted.
Yeah, it is quite possible, because there are plenty of cafes and, and bars, et cetera, on, on the routes, the various routes. And, and I'm sure we could get one, two or three of them to, to offer a discount for anyone that shows the leaflet. So, yeah, it's a good idea.
Thank you. It's, I mean, it's something that's, obviously, the leaflet to explain everything is important. But it's something to note councillor Young, so if it can be done, fine. And we'll see what the leaflet consists of. I know both Adrian and councillor Green have got their hands up. So Adrian first.
Just really coming back as well with that. If you do decide after the year and trial, if you like how the platform works and you like what it does, it's possible to put vouchers into the app as well. So if a local business later on says, you know, we really want to try and get a bit more foot flow, we can support them by, by putting a voucher in, which people can then go into their premises and have it scanned and get a discount. Or if you have any events that you want to promote, again, we can put live alerts that pop up when people open the app. So it's a really nice, it's not just a trial, it gives you another marketing resource as well.
Good, good.
Thank you. councillor Green.
Rebecca, can you think about a promotional package? And we'll bid for some funds for it.
Yes, absolutely. I can, I can work with Adrian on that as well. And obviously, some of the interested businesses and we've said, you know, we've got some, we have still got some great events coming up. So depending on timing, all of that could work. And I, I love the idea of the fact that we can utilise the app as well for that, Adrian. That's great.
Yeah, yeah. It's, I mean, it's a really nice, it's a friendly platform. I'm, I'm making, is Dean, that you're kind of, does he take care of a lot of your tech? And that kind of thing. So, because the other thing I can do as well, if Dean has time at some point, I can also show him how to actually operate some of the, the actual, the backend, the operating system behind the app. So that he would always be able to, if he wants to put updates or if he needs to change anything, he'd be able to do that. It, it won't, it wouldn't take long for, for me to train Dean up to be able to do those things at all.
Dean's got plenty of time.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to him.
Just thinking about promotion. Would we be able to put something on Facebook daily as to what is going on in Ramsgate? Most people look at Facebook, don't they?
They do. I know, I know the Twitter app is, is, sorry, our Twitter account is very informative and I look at it a lot. I don't look at the Facebook as, as much. But I'm sure, I'm sure it is, if the Twitter is anything to go by. Good point, Barbara. Dean, I, I take it that's your responsibility?
Yeah, so like you say, that posts will go on Twitter and Facebook, any marketing that Ali has with Adrian or Rebecca, and any posts will be done accordingly. Like councillor Green's just said, if Rebecca finds like a marketing package to work towards, we will work together on it to get it out to the public.
Thank you. I sort of got the impression that councillor Young was talking about sort of like things in general. But I have to say, councillor Young, honestly, in the Twitter feed, the Ramsgate town council, it's really informative, where it's David today or things are happening. And, and so it is more than just what's going on and, and very in keeping with what's happening that day. So I'm sure Facebook's on it. Thank you for your question. Okay. Well, with that. Okay. Well, with that, I'd like to say thank you to those guests that have come along and spoken this evening for your time. And I'm going to ask you to leave if you don't mind, because we're going to carry on some business without you. That's where the fun starts here. So Andrew.
Thank you. Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.